Call the order of the.
For the meeting?
We'll call it the meeting. You got mail. First issue on the agenda is the approval of the school board minutes from September 27.
I'll make a motion to approve this presentation.
Thank you, Jamie.
I'll start.
Thank you, Judge. Any further steps on that?
Thank you, Jerry. Nice to know.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Then we just have a very important thing. And that one carries.
Yes.
And communications. I think we received the invitation to the article fundraiser and anniversary celebration. And we also, we did receive some email communications from a community member, but that's being addressed. Did you receive any?
Yeah, that, that invitation is for the 20th anniversary room.
Okay.
For the North Country Chatter.
Oh, wow.
And I saw that you have the, it's the E S news as well as that, as far as.
Yeah, because that was the other one.
All right, business is next, Mr. Ford.
And that's the chocolate going around.
And that's it for that?
Yeah.
Great. All right. Next up, talk again.
I did listen to all of the topics that were presented at the Kidder Law Conference. It was, it was really great. It was very. Lot of information. The school, the staff did go with a, had a suicide prevention training on last Friday. And I'm, I'm sure Jason will be able to fill you in on the rest of that, that professional development. There are communications you just mentioned. Also included in the packet is a copy of the recent school fire and safety inspection checklist results. This was recently completed by the fire department.
And that was, there was nothing that was totally ordinary, nothing very good.
Nothing.
Nothing failed.
Very good. Many meeting minutes, just that you received the facilities committee meeting minutes in your packet. It was already reviewed at the last meeting.
Can I, since we have Mark here?
Yeah. Oh, Mark's going to talk. That was the next one.
Oh, okay.
Let's see. And Mark's going to give you an update on the, the heating system and where we're at with that. And. I'm, I'm requesting a, a non-public, but the number incident that just came up recently. So I just want to update the board on.
Okay.
And Mark, I'm done. That's it.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
We had beastmen here, train and DHL on a test yesterday, and we fired up the boilers. Couple headaches here and there, but she was running fine and went through the whole day. We got temperatures up at some of the classrooms, you know, almost 70 degrees, seeing get there. Anyway, during the night it went down. Train has not completed the list yet on notifications and whatnot for myself, so I was unaware. But anyways, this point came in with 62 degrees. We got the beastmen back. They came and they set up a few things and found that it was a safety control item that triggered for some reason. So they went back. They just think it was a programming problem. Another thing that was kind of exciting today is that we got it on the domestic hot water off the boiler, where we've been using electric as a backup. So now that system is now in operation. We had a lot of trouble in the Andy's wing trying to get the air out of lines, which as Joe knows, that long section is a problem. And poor Mr. Higgin, he had to wear a couple of, to wear the clothing. I'm glad to say that tonight it's at 70 degrees.
Nice.
So the hallway is still a little cold, but the classrooms themselves.
Excellent.
So everything's going and. I'm expecting they're, they're going to be here for another week, rebalancing and, and you know, making sure that things are operating properly. Like here, I'm assuming that we're going to have a couple of hiccups along the road for the next month or so, until we get all the programming itself straightened and operated correctly. But it's exciting and it's amazing to walk in that room and actually talk while the boilers are going.
Quite a system.
Really cool system. And does anybody have any questions for me or anything? And I, anybody who wants to come in and see it, I'd love to show it off.
It is pretty. It's, yeah, it's, it's an impressive looking system.
True. Well, the thing I like is all the digital boards that you can look at and the lights.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's exciting.
Pretty lights.
Yeah, a lot of lights. But anyway.
They stay on when the system goes down.
Yeah, they stay right there. Exactly.
I was impressed with the welds.
Yeah, well, when they came in and in the morning, if the system went down, the guy walked over to the unit and said, area 94, walked over, knew exactly what to do. And that, one thing nice, the beastman has a good support. So if I was, you know, going to call up on the phone, what does that mean, even though I do have the bar? You know, we can work it out together. So it's really.
It's exciting.
Good support.
Excellent.
And you get all those alerts directly to your phone when something happens like that?
Yeah, I get texts.
Yeah.
That way I know if a boiler goes down or something's not operating.
Who else gets them? Is there, you and anyone else or just you?
No one else at the moment. But I'd be more than happy to share it to anybody who wants.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, you're out of town or out of some range.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I could just kind of ask people why. I mean, Jason always volunteers.
Jason.
Yeah, he always volunteers for stuff.
Yeah, just, you know, if you.
Well, we're going to have a redundant. And plus, the other thing too, that you got to remember is that if something does go down, it also, they're going to know at train.
Right.
So they're going to be making phone calls.
Sure.
With the lift also.
Is there, is there a service contract associated with that?
There will be after a year. We're talking about one right now for support for this building because the year's up.
Yep.
And then we'll, the whole year is free and that's that. And they do it by, like contracted hours. So this building, we're looking at 16 hours. I only want eight, but they, they're pushing 16 hours, but for a year. But with that contract, they also, if they send someone out, they reduce the rate at 20%.
Oh, perfect.
For, you know, any call outs or anything that has to come in.
Excellent.
I had a question that's not heat system related. We were talking last week about the, replacing the, the maintenance building.
Yeah.
And in the, in the notes, it says prices somewhere in the range of 39 to 54,000.
Yeah.
Is that, is that going to include like getting rid of that existing building, pour in the slab? That's just like.
That's just a steel building. And I want to tell you that, that, those are companies that are sending me wanting to get my business. I'm sure after we talk and talk, there's going to be some add-ons to that.
Yeah.
Those are shelves. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, the, the advertised installed. But, you know, I'm waiting to see everything. And I'm just trying to get the ballpark. And I want to see if people are interested and willing to go forward with that.
But we'd be looking at some site works and disposal and some concrete and stuff like that.
I'm going to try to incorporate that along with straightening out the walkway. And then also clearing some of the land to the left of the building. So the areas for me to put the tractor stuff and things that are on the site, put a stocking denser on.
So left as you're looking at the building, towards where the path is now?
Yeah.
Stuff that doesn't have to be inside, but still needs to be stored.
Still needs to be stored, yeah.
How, what is the size of the building though now?
The building's 40 by 40.
40 by 40.
And we're going to go 40 wide by 60 deep.
Yeah.
With three bays in it. And so that way we can keep the truck, the van out of the weather, all the, all the traffic.
And open for storage.
Yeah. And then, of course, all the desk and all the extra stuff we have to have.
Thank you. That was, I was following up on that because there was a little bit of discussion last week about, about that and where.
Yeah. You know, we're trying to get prices together and get more prices and more real stuff together. We'll go forward with that.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Robert.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things to kind of highlight this past week, well, last week at this point. We had used our off-site evacuation drill. We had pushed out, let parents know and whatnot. The Gigi Elementary School on Tuesday and headed over to the rec department. And it was, it was a fantastic experience, very, very plain, very neat, very everybody on par. It was about, you know, 11 minutes, I think, to do everything with them. And then another eight to get back after talking with all the kids about everything over there and kind of why we might use these types of drills and things like that and why we practice them. So that was really, really slick. And on Wednesday, the weather cooperated again. And we went over to James Byhouse, Lincoln Middle High School. You know, after both of them, Peter and I sat down with Officer Scrappert, our SRO, and just kind of had some opportunity, kind of chatted out a few things that we may want to. And just, you know, little things like that, but that's part of doing the drill. Making sure that we have those experiencers and then have those conversations afterwards to make some updates there. But it went well from a staff standpoint, from a student standpoint, and then all the emergency personnel that just made themselves available because they were aware that it was going on. And, you know, positive things to say about it. So that was nice and very grateful for their support there. Last Friday, Dr. McGann already mentioned that we had our in-service day. What we did was, you know, she talked about the suicide prevention piece a little bit. Our Karen Bell, our school social worker did some training for staff to around McKinney Vento and homelessness in terms of how we identify kids, supports that are out there. You know, how do we as a, as a school go through and determine best interest in terms of placement and things like that? Just because there's all those questions and wonders about that. And then the, you know, we did include some staff wellness opportunities through our wellness committee throughout the day as well. And then in the afternoon, we broke up into kind of building spans. And the high school worked on finalizing and updating our program studies that will be, you'll see in the next month or so, just in terms of the board. At the board level as well as making sure that we have a central place that we house all of our syllabi and things along those lines in terms of curriculum. It's a work in progress. It's definitely something that's important in terms of if we have a staff and relief, we still want to bring someone in as a new hire and have absolutely nothing there that they could drop from. At the middle school level, we talked a lot about digitizing their student-led conferences. There's those portfolios that they shared last year. High school was digital last year. Middle school was digital, but then printed out and put into a binder. Elementary is fully, you know, paper and binder at this point. But with the middle school level, talking a lot about voice and choice in terms of how it's presented, what mediums they use to present, but then having some very basic and concrete components that they, that they have to include in their own way. But we want to give that voice and choice to students while giving them the opportunity to use and practice those ICP skills and whatnot. So that went well. And then the elementary school, we spent some time taking the rubrics that were created a couple of years back and demonstrating success. I did a lot of writing, I think it was two years ago, working with them. Last year, we ran with those rubrics in terms of collecting student data, pre and post-assessment and things like that, and doing some tweaks along the way. But because those rubrics were originally created in very much isolation through COVID protocols and things like that, they're very grade level specific. And one of the conversations we've had in the past is, wouldn't it be great to have like a true progression of like what a proficient level or a three would look like? So we spent some time doing that, making sure that they line up, looking at common language. And we're not finished yet, but those are things that are working on us at this point there. Um, the only other piece that I'll share out, and if you have questions about other stuff that I put in my report, let me know. I don't know the result as of tonight, but I know girls soccer, they are really in prime position to be hosting the playoff game. You know, there's a couple of games left, one tonight, one Friday, and then another one next week. With some luck, they could even get a first round bye, but definitely in position for a home game in terms of that first round at minimum. And so we'll be looking to plan and strategize some things around that and getting the school community together to support them during that.
Then the front country meet that says Pittsburgh, is that tomorrow? It says today on?
It, it is tomorrow. It was moved. It got rescheduled.
Okay.
At one point. Yeah, it is definitely tomorrow.
That's the only one that's been rescheduled?
As far as I know.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
I wrote a note to a kid that said, I'm sorry, I missed it tonight.
Yeah. Yeah. So they're going up to Pittsburgh.
Just kidding.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Committee reports. The emergency response committee had a meeting on October 2nd. And we met with the Woodstock Police, Lincoln Police, Fire, ambulance representative from the school to go over everything. We handed out. The information to everyone. So if there's anything needed to be changed, to send it back to Sharon. We discussed the security upgrades of the past year, future planned upgrades, and possible money coming in for more upgrades. We discussed the school evacuation drills and the possibility of parents, guardians becoming involved with our reunification drill. Suicide prevention plan was discussed. The school and community AEDs, including the new outside boxes that are being installed throughout the community. They're maintained by the Linwood Ambulance. You just have to call 911, tell them which box you're at, and they will give you a code to allow you access. Basic command structure and related FEMA training was discussed. A special app, panic button app and interface with the dispatch was discussed. And that you can text 911 and they will be able to find your location. And that was about 45 minutes or so. So I saw one of those AEDs outside on the rec building.
Yeah.
Is there one, is there another one that got on the backfield too, or is it the only one for this?
The only one.
What's that?
The only one on this campus.
Okay. That's a good idea. All right. Thank you, Casey. Any staff nominations or recommendations?
I do have a recommendation.
Okay.
I'm Melissa Cabral, C A B R A L, for a paraprofessional position.
It's local.
It should be local, yes.
Yeah, cool. She should be in the elementary or the high school?
It's going to be the elementary.
Excellent. And now she's replacing one who recently lost, so we're still short one after this. I'll make a motion to approve Melissa Cabral for para.
There, Jamie. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Close some sessions and that motion carries. Welcome to the board. And nothing on a new business that.
New, I don't have.
Okay. And then strategic plan for continuing business?
Continuing business, no. It's a good plan.
I see we do have students evening. There's not a whole lot going on recently at Linwood, but the 29th of September, homecoming, we had the homecoming dance, which went really well. There wasn't like a ton of students that went, but the people that went really enjoyed themselves. Then the 30th was homecoming, which went really well. A lot of people showed up. The high school boys and girls both won their games. And for the spirit week, the seniors did win that. And then any other points that I have is the Interact Club for the 30th, 31st Halloween. We'll be doing the trunk or treat in Lincoln and to raise money.
That's still over Maple Street, right? The end of Maple Street, yeah.
At the Penguin.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent.
You said it's a fundraiser? It's just raising like the Interact Club. Wait.
The trunk or treat? No.
I was just saying, how do they do that? Because I've never.
They.
They don't charge for anything.
It's cheap doing food, like he usually does set up his food. So they do that and then he puts out a donation.
Oh, okay.
Burgers and dogs and things.
Great. That's always a fun event.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, thank you. We have staff.
Okay. I didn't get anything from staff specifically to share, but I would like to say one that we've all seen. Mark and all the guys from the contractors working really hard to get that heat online. The kids have been bearing it pretty well. Some blankets around and have been ignoring the hat rule in terms of the winter hats in the room sometimes. But that's, you know, that's going to happen. And also I want to personally say it's been really nice to have Officer Scrappert in the building this year. I feel like that's been a big plus for us. And I feel like that's a pretty common, pretty common stat. So thank you to everybody for making that happen.
Good to know. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
She seems to be a pretty good fit.
Yeah, I think she is.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Community. Paul.
I'm Paul. I'm here to want to free children up at school. And I just wanted to respond to a request for information that I submitted recently to the SAU. Which they partially responded to. They have all the information. I guess we're getting another report for the, for the latest school year. So thank you for the report. Thanks to the chairman for maybe clarifying some of the information that I was trying to communicate. So basically, this is response about demonstrated success. And we brought in demonstrated success, I think about 2020, or at least I gave a presentation on either West Ed or Demonstrations, as they come into schools that are underperforming. They're required to go into schools that are like under 10% proficiency. And so we, we had a very, very, very low performing middle school and okay performing high school and mediocre performing elementary school. And right now, I mean, so the middle school is, is now in, in the high school. So those students that, you know, we, we knew that were underperforming moved to that level. Right now, the middle school, I don't know, the high schoolers now are performing well below proficiency. For science, for example, there's 78% failure rate in the eighth grade and 89% non-proficiency in science. And anyways, after the demonstrated scouts come in, we did do the strategic planning, which I was on that committee as well. And so one of the things came out, there were professional learning communities, which the principal just referred to in his summary of what's going on and the rubics. And so this is, I'm just targeting this right now. When we get the new information, hopefully we can go to more detail on it. But I did get some information for the request to know from the June report of 2022. And they did three samplings of the, this is of the. They, they talked to the teachers and the teachers basically said, "The main focus of the PLC work was about using data to drive change instructions to meet the needs of all learners through the lens of writing." So the focus on writing. Writing was chosen as a focus by the Linwood Elementary staff as an area of concern for all grade levels, even prior to the pandemic, coupled with low NH SAS writing scores. While this was the original goal, more work was needed around curriculum, more work was needed around instructional practices, more work was needed around data collection and more work was needed around school structures. I haven't seen it. This report doesn't cover the curriculum, instructional practices, data collection, or school structure, but hopefully we have that information and we can use that information and implement it. It's not in the data that I received in, in this tranche of information. Anyways, the Demisage Struck, they, they went into the elementary school with the writing and they focused on norms, rules and climate, consistent protocols, clear communication plan, articulated goals, defined timelines and accountability. And they did, like I said, three samplings in September, January and June. Forgive me if you all received this before and analyzed it before, and if you have it, I'm sure the superintendent can give it to you. But a, a few things stood out to me during these things. I mean, one, of course, our test scores haven't gone up. They've actually gone down. But these are the. This specifically is the elementary. So during the three meetings, it looks like they had full attendance or with the staff meeting in September and June, and only half showed up in January. Now, for reference, we did spend about $50,000, I think $47,000 and change on this. So I think it's important that, you know, if we spend any more on this, that everyone attends the meetings, you know, for the staff. Otherwise, it's, it's hard to improve. But the takeaway on all of these, from January, from September to June, does like our team does not yet utilize a set of consistent meeting roles that the members execute to facilitate our work. There is no change from September to June. And that is true with, our team never used consistent protocols such as agendas, backward planning, charts, data protocols, no improvement between September and June. These are the educators saying this. Our team has not articulated a plan for communicating action steps between members, facilitators to members, facilitator to principal, facilitators to admin staff, principal to central office. No improvement between September and June. Articulated goals actually went the other way. It went to go up or, you know, it actually got worse. Our team has not articulated agreement of team purpose. We have not yet articulated a measurable goal for our work. So that between September and June went down. And then, and then, you know, and all the other ones did not improve over that time period. And again, another one that didn't improve is accountability. Teachers, leaders and or administrators do not collect and review our meeting notes and action steps. An articulated, agreed upon system does not exist for our team members to hold each other accountable for action steps established at meetings. And defined timeline, our team has not mapped our complete timelines for achieving goals. We frequently miss meetings or scheduled meetings or, and scheduled goals. Just like I said, in January, only half the people showed up. We spent $50,000 on this and it looks from this report that there's absolutely no improvement. And it looks like we wasted $50,000 according, not to me, but to this data. So, I mean, hopefully the new data has, has better results. But again, according to demonstrated success, more work is needed on the curriculum, instructional pack practices, data collection and school structures. And, you know, I like to see those recommendations. I mean, we all want this school to improve. And the test scores have gone down. The outside consultant looks like there's no improvement from their data, not mine. The features, according to the elementary school, you know, that these are, the writing is an area for concern. And I haven't seen anything on the middle school. I haven't seen anything on the high school. Haven't seen anything on math or science. And, you know, I, I, I just want to know what the plan is moving forward. What are we doing? Are we taking the monies that we spent and implementing those things? And, you know, just, just as a side note, I know that the former principal program now said the students in the high school, which, you know, are 61% non-proficient in math, that they were getting, you know, two quote unquote helpings of math and two quote unquote helpings of English. And I just want to make sure that we're still focusing on spending more time on those subject areas that we're really, really, really deficient on. And we've known that since these kids have been in middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community input?
I have a couple of things, we'll go before.
Yeah.
Um, policy committee met tonight, we're gonna be sending some first readings. The only two on the policy committee are Ashley and I. And Ashley admittedly, and upfront, she's this, I think, she can't make because of her job. So thankfully Casey came early and did policy with me tonight. Thank you. Um, however, Kevin, Casey, and Joe are on facilities, so they're coming early. Um, once a month anyway, which leaves.
Leaves me. I mean, when we, I think when we were doling them out, I think Casey had signed up, but I think not thinking about facilities.
I went back through the minutes and it says only me and Ashley on there, but I have Casey on there.
Maybe we thought our vagina lived in.
It didn't work, so.
I can't, I can't, I'm purchasing management, so I can do it.
Yeah, but that means you're coming to every single meeting early. Okay. If you're good with it, then.
It's totally up to you.
He volunteered, I saw his hand go up. Done. I'll make a motion. Do we do that anymore?
Oh, we're done before.
Okay. So Joe's gonna be in the policy, great guy. We took care of that night, you're good.
Was it? I was staying on the, on the notes. Was that managed again? Anything else?
Yes, this weekend is, Saturday is the delegate assembly.
It happened in January.
Um, it was, and then they moved it.
Because of the weather?
Yeah, because of the, and so from now on, it'll be in October instead of January, yeah. Um, Jango is fine when we're doing remote, but, yeah. So I don't know if anybody read through any of the proposed resolutions, or if you care, normally you could come and move my better judgment. I usually go with their recommendations or not, whether the, um, and the, the school vote association recommends or not, so. If you're all good with that, that's good. All of them is on, is on it. Uh, that's the proposal that we put in the last year. Um, I mean, it's not till Saturday too, so if you wanna, I did, did you, um, email to everybody the proposed resolutions, resolutions?
A long time ago, a while ago.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, look back. When you, you had talked about it.
Yeah.
Um, at a board meeting a while ago.
Yeah, I mean, I signed up for it in.
And I emailed them, but I can resend it. I'll find it and resend it.
Yeah, and then if anybody has any notes or suggestions, respond to Sharon and then she can send them on to me. That way we're not having a
Yep.
A meeting purely now.
I have one other meeting. Each one of you, you see to a packet. The, uh, the National School Vote Association, the, the policies that went through recent legislation. This was a training session that we, we listened to, you know, online.
Right, right.
And it was very, um, it's black, I think it was black and white.
Yeah, that just went to the policy committee.
Oh, just to the policy committee.
But I can send it to everyone.
Okay.
As well.
But it was, it was very interesting to see the, the, um, the newest laws that are, you know, guiding these, these.
Yeah, it, it's addressing the policies that just.
Actually doesn't seem like that many though.
It was nine.
I mean, usually it's a lot more than that.
I know. It's been through the mind.
Right.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, I get the, I will take a poll to go to non-public.
Um, also, we met, um, the presentations with the, um, support staff. Um, and we would like a non-meeting after our non-public, just to update you on the first proposal.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so for sure, the ninety-one, eight, three, C, discussions amounted likely adversely to affect the reputation. First thing, maybe the board is gonna go in a non-public session, don't they?
Yeah, yeah.
I think, yeah.
No.
Yes, thank you. All right, we are. I will be taking.